There's a strip right there at Gray Court that they don't want to cut either. But we've got them looping in on there. It's right there besides.
So they were out there cutting this morning.
Yeah. Do you need to go ahead and start?
Yeah, I was about to say, we'll go ahead and start. All right, it's five o'clock, so we'll call our meeting to order. Ms. Branham, did we notify the media? Hey, Mr. Jenkins.
We did.
Thank you. And I do declare that we have a quorum of five of seven board members present, and we will need action to approve our agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we'll turn it over to Mr. Lawless for our budget discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mainly just going to hit the changes that we've made since first reading. I believe you've been provided a copy of it, your... Copying the entire document, and I think last week you got or over the weekend, you received a copy of the revenue and expenditures schedules individually. The main change that has occurred since the first reading is how we have a balanced budget. Mainly, we'll go over the changes that have been made to achieve the balanced budget, but we're currently sitting at $61,659,000 of both revenues and expenditures. So again, it is a balanced budget, but it does include a millage increase of 4.9 mills. Looking at the revenue schedule on page six.
So I want to make sure I understand that. So you're saying we only get a balanced budget if we increase the millage?
This budget is prepared with an estimated $400,000 impact associated with a millage increase. This document factors in a millage increase. I believe that... Ma'am?
Did you prepare one if it is not approved?
Please... Well, it's $400,000 is what was added to the budget.
So we know that if we don't pass it, or if Clennan doesn't pass it, we'll have to probably come back with a new document that can be passed with the difference of the $400,000.
Okay.
So as we were just discussing, the number one, the top line of the revenue schedule includes a $400,000 increase from the first reading for ad valorem taxes. That is the impact, estimated impact of a 4.9 mil increase in operating millage. The only other changes to the revenue side was a decrease in the education funding model of $75,000, and that is split between two line items, the education funding general fund and a separate line item for health insurance. Last year, that was presented in a single line item. This Department of Education has started separating those items in our projections, so we have separated it. So what you see for '24, '25 for the current year budget, that's kind of an estimate of that allocation split out just based on a percentage basis for comparability purposes. But between first reading and when we were going with our own estimate of the funding model, and then once we actually received the projection from the Department of Ed, we lowered those two line items by a combined $75,000 and increased the line item under other revenue, the transfer from special revenue funds. We increased that by $13,000. So total revenue increases between first reading and second reading is $338,000. Again, that does factor in a $400,000 impact from a 4.9 mil increase in operating millage. So a vote yes to approve this budget would be considered a vote to approve the millage increase. Flipping over to page 12 and the expenditure schedule.
Can we ask some questions here about this first before we get to expenditures? On the interest on bank accounts, what was dramatic in that we went from a $50,000 budget to an $8,000 budget?
Number one is with the... The most significant impact is the decline in interest rates that we were making on our account. But also, there's the balance that we're carrying in those accounts now that we're no longer peddling in the federal funds for ESER and some of the larger learns program where we were carrying some more sizable cash balances. Even though it was kind of an in and out, we do make money on those while we're there in our possession.
Okay.
So that, with those balances being decreased, the bank balances are not paying near as much in interest.
Okay. And then under the reimbursement from '56 and then this District '56 mill, that the budget was $46,000, now it's $60,000. I noticed on the last actual update that we received, it still had zero at both of those. So is that actually money we are receiving, or have we not been receiving?
We do actually receive it. It comes after the end of the year, for the prior fiscal year. It is supposed to be tied to the value of a mill somehow over all of eternity that has become locked at $46,000. And they have reimbursed us to the tune of $46,000 apiece for both of those problems sent... Programs, not problems. For each of those programs, we've received $46,000 for as long as I can see records. So based on the value of a mill, we estimate that that it should be closer to 60.
Okay.
And each one of those programs is claiming half a mil. That's why that's a little bit different. So it's not a whole mil per program, it's half a mil per program. So that's 120 is closer to the amount of a mil.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more revenue-related questions? So turning over to page 12, the expenditure schedule. Between first and second reading, we have lowered salaries by $400,000 and social security and retirement associated with that for a combined $130,000 total, just for the value of those associated with the salary cut. That is a result of beginning the process of putting names and positions to the anticipated position cuts. That is an extremely conservative estimate of the impact of those cuts. I believe Dr. Penland has shared with y'all some of the anticipated position cuts. We have only lowered this budget for what we know we can sustain, and that brings it into point of balancing. However, we think that the impact will be greater than that, once the dust settles. But until we have our schools filled next year and all required positions filled, we truly won't know whether the position cuts can hold or not. We feel confident that they can. But we have been very, very conservative on the budget, just to get to the point, just enough that we could balance it. But that does include some changes, some that we would not like to have. But we will discuss those a little further. The only other changes from between first reading and second reading was an increase in the cleaning services line of $45,000. We had originally projected, we thought we could cut that based on a proposed contract that we had been provided, but they informed us right after first reading that they had left one of our locations off of the original proposal and went back, and once I evaluated, they were correct. So we will be, that contract goes to about $1,920,000. But we are nearly fully converted over to all contract, and that comes with a much more clean and known outlay the further we get over into contract services versus employee positions. The other changes that we've made were to reduce travel and supplies. We reduced travel by $25,000, we're reducing supplies by $50,000. And really, when we're talking about things that we can control, those are the two things where we can have the most significant impact. There's a certain amount of travel that it would be absolutely required. There's certain amounts of supplies that are absolutely required. But those are usually the easiest things when it comes to belt tightening. Those are the first things to go because they, you know, if you look at what we spend on utilities, we don't really have a lot of flexibility there. It requires a certain number of people to operate our classrooms and our facilities. So the amount that we're able to cut is very limited there. But in those categories, we felt like we could take those down. And it's, you know, you're talking about a, you know, 16% cut in one and I think it was five in the other. If, you know, small percentage reductions we have in the past had those categories be lower than they were. Last year, we had raised them some. And I think that some of the other changes that we're making operationally will allow us to fairly easily recognize those cuts. So overall, we've changed the expenditure side by a decrease of $560,000. So again, that gets us to total revenues and expenditures of $61,659,000 in a balanced budget. That doesn't... Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to ask, so I want to go back to salaries, because obviously that's our biggest expenditure.
Oh, yes, sir.
And, you know, I appreciate the effort and the travel and all that, but $25,000 on a, you know, a 60-plus million dollar budget is... It's, yeah, we all know it's just dropping the budget.
Yeah, well, 90% plus of our, you know, it goes beyond just salaries because if you look at our contracted positions that are lying down in the... Well, let me look at cleaning services, look at our SROs and professional services line. If you look at the instructional or the student services and function or Object 313. Yeah, Object 313, those are all people-related. Our people are a high majority. 90-plus percent of what we do is people and who's in our buildings.
Yeah, and that's true with a lot of organizations.
True.
So here's my question, though. When we look at the budget in 2024, '25 on salaries to now, I was under the impression that we were, we made some significant cuts on personnel across the district?
Yeah, the sheet that we were provided with the positions that were reduced and the financial impact to the budget, this reflects a $4 million decrease to the budget. But that doesn't seem to be reflected here.
So part of that is the increase in the learns grant. So those positions are in here, that we had to remove those from our budget and also from the initial. But also, whenever you look at this, this is including all the raises, the $1,500 increase for all the teachers, their steps, and that type of thing is also included in this difference. So just because if we would have stayed with everybody the same, we would have gone up a lot more in salaries just because of the cost of the hiring.
So you're basically saying we cut $4 million, but we're spending $4 million?
Well, again, and not all of those positions are general fund. Those, some of those positions are coming from other sources.
But that's what we had to cut, because some of those federal programs picked up other people that if you cut a master teacher, somebody else may have rolled into that, or if you cut those.
Well, this particular document, we're talking about cutting funds out of our budget, and we're talking about the general fund.
That was created as in total list of cuts, that wasn't just general fund.
So how, what portion of this $4 million actually comes out of the general fund?
It's not really broken down.
Yeah, I don't know that. I mean, a lot of it is general fund and a lot of it's federal. So, I mean, I wouldn't say 50/50, but I mean, I would have to look at that to determine.
So this 30, on the 2024, '25 budget, $34.7 million, is it safe to say that if we didn't have the learns program, that would have been $4 million more? That would have been more around a $38 million?
Ask that again.
Learn salaries weren't $4 million, it was...
I know the months that we had was $800,000 that y'all approved, so...
Yeah, and that was for the remainder.
That was just the remainder.
Yeah, that was the remainder, so 1.6, maybe 2.
And then, you know, we had the, had we retained the learns grant, it would have also included performance pay that would have been significantly higher than that. So a lot of the, a lot of what would have been paid got cut out completely with the loss of the grant.
And I can reshare that sheet once I, if we break it down based on... A lot of the classroom teaching positions would be general fund. A lot of the master teacher interventionists would have been federal funds. So we'd have to kind of break it down based on that, so.
But for the 2025, '26, those master teachers are going to come out of the general?
All of those are now in a federal. They're in Title I, Title II. So, yeah, I sent that out, because you had asked for that a couple of weeks ago.
I just want to make sure I understand this $34.8 million. Because I'm confused, and you're saying all of the learns stuff that we have that got pulled, you're saying for 2025, '26, that's going to be covered under a federal program now?
So what it was, was the learns was paying for 18 or 19 master teachers. Federal programs was paying for a large number of academic interventionists. And so since we lost learns, we took the rest of the federal funds and did about a part-part. So we've got some master teachers, some academic interventionists that are in our federal funds now versus all in one or all in the other. So we kind of took both of those numbers and kind of split those.
So what does this number reflect, the 34.8 million?
The 34.8 million does not reflect any learns people or any of the master teachers, because they are now in a Title I, Title II type program. So that would be, you might have to help me on this one, Jim. Is that, that line, is that all teaching, or is that administrative salaries too, or?
That is every general fund salary.
That is every general fund salary. So the master teachers would not be included in this line.
Nor the interventionists.
There may be one interventionist, but majority of the interventionists are in a federal program also.
And the 24, '25 column only included the $800,000 for the learns. So it was, that line item was raised up back in February when we did the budget amendment.
So again, I'm trying to pinpoint my confusion here. So you've made statements that we made cuts on people.
Yes.
So I'm kind of, are those cuts impacting the general or the federal programs?
Both.
Both.
Where we had positions that were covered under the federal program, some of those went away. We, where we had taken the learns that were in one federal program and had to move them as a result of losing the grant to the general fund on a temporary basis, Amanda Lacarose and her, and Dr. Penland worked to try to determine what positions we could eliminate within the district. Many of those positions were from federal funds, other federal funds. And so, as Dr. Penland was saying, so now the, most of the learns, master teachers are being picked up in Title I, which is another federal program. So they've only temporarily been in the general fund.
Right, okay.
But we cut that from 18 down to, I think, 11 or 12, so, and then...
Again, I'm trying to relate this number, this 34.8 million for budgeted for '25, '26. Because what you're telling me, I guess...
Our target is actually lower than that.
What's lower than the, say that again?
Our target for actual expenditures is below what we've got budgeted. We lowered to the point that we were able to, we know that we can do this, right? And then there are certain, you know, if you say, for instance, if you have like a, this particular school has experienced a decline in enrollment, and we eliminate or anticipate eliminating a position, and then if enrollment goes up, you know, if you've pushed it and now, you know, say, well, we're going to go from where we've had, we'll be an example, 18 in a class to 25. Well, if enrollment comes in and it's actually 30, well, that's kind of a line that we don't really want to cross. So this is a very conservative estimate.
So you're leaving yourself room if you need to hire some teachers because of...
Correct.
Okay, and that's fair. I'm just trying to...
And hopefully, that's not where we're going to be. You know, we, what we really want is for that to go directly to fund balance next year.
Yeah.
You know, whereas people, you know, may request, you know, say, well, I've got repair money available and I don't really anticipate it, but I need these, I need these supplies. Can we do a, can we do a change? But nobody ever, nobody ever seeks to move things from a salary or benefit account. So if we put it there, it's safe, if that makes any sense.
Yeah. I guess, again, my confusion here is we've heard that we've made cuts, we've made cuts, and then you're showing me a budget that's $40,000 above our biggest expenditure, which is salary.
Yes.
Where are the cuts, where are the people? I mean, I was expecting this to be lower.
Yeah, I think that this is misleading and that it, you know, it's misleading and that it doesn't provide where this lays in, whether it comes out of the general fund or federal fund. So it appears, as I'm looking at this, we've made $4 million in cuts to our general fund, but you're saying that it could only be 50%.
I mean, just looking through the list.
Well, that's still $2 million.
And then, whenever, what's the impact of the $1,500 raise on the staff that was...
Oh, Jody, I don't, we have, we quantified that for the first reading, and I don't have it in my notes with me today.
And so, I mean, just from a little bit of memory, I think that was like $800,000 to a million for the cost of what that increase for every teacher on a pay scale would increase. And then whenever you take everybody else up a step, you know, that's, you know, increasing it too. So, you know, cutting $2 million, we basically cut the raises, how much it would cost us to give raises to everybody, based on the $1,500.
And that's, I guess, that's where I want to make sure, when people are asking me these questions, that we can articulate, well, yeah, but we've had requirements here by the state to increase salaries that costs the district $2 million.
Right.
And honestly, we're still reeling from last year's increases. That, this year's increases were more accustomed to, it's more like what we're used to. The changes that they made to the minimum salary schedule last year were devastating to us financially.
And I remember that.
Yeah.
So you're saying that the $1,500 pay increase is offsetting anything in this portion of decreases that we would have seen reflected in the general fund?
That's, that's what I've just kind of made the correlation to. Like if we had a $2 million cut here, the increase of everybody's step, and also the increase of the $1,500 for like the required per sale increase comes close to equating both of those.
Well, I would like, instead of it being like we think and hypothetical, I'd love to see the number. Like what, what is that increase that we're having to take the hit from the state? What's the step increase? And then what of this number is really coming out of this budget versus other monies?
Yeah, I have another column with names, and then I can easily figure out if that's federal or not, so.
Ken, you tell me the difference between line item 14 and 411 from supplies to other supplies? What is the difference there?
Every one of these categories has a definition provided by the Department of Education. I can't remember what it is that makes up an other supply number 411, but it, for some reason, my memory serves, it might have something to do specifically with libraries.
Okay. Well, how did our salaries and stuff go up, but yet social security expenses went down?
We estimated, generally, we estimate a full seven point six five percent of salaries for our portion of social security. Uh, in trying to figure out how lean our budget can get, we started looking at what our actual expenditure is because not every salary dollar is subject to social security, um, and it's, it's more of a six point six percent. So what we have, what we are left with is an actual six point six percent roughly of our estimated salary number.
And again, on, this is another example that we've had a budget, but the actuals, the last actuals that you provided showed a zero draw off of it, and that's the student transportation.
With, as in, we have several revenue items that come in after the end of the year based on what happened during the year. And that's an example of that, and it's based on, uh, I, I, it's based on bus routes and special needs students on bus routes and how many miles, and they don't calculate it until, that's why it's so hard to estimate that revenue, uh, because we won't even know what we're getting for twenty-four, twenty-five until July.
I think she's talking about the expense for student transportation.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
It was, it was budgeted at twenty-five last year, but nothing was actually came out of it.
Oh, that's a, well, I thought you were talking, I don't know why, I was jumping back to the revenue line item for student transportation, which we haven't received zero on. Um, it's a, that, the reason that it wasn't in the last projection was that that's mainly field trips and those come at the end of the year. So they'll, that'll show up on later financials, May and June. The, the last actual would have been based on April.
And a lot of the field trip funds are utilized out of federal first, so that's kind of a last to use pot um, for the field trips, because they, they are allocated some field trip money for their federal programs first.
Right.
So on the list of, uh, positions that were reduced, there's, it, it's kind of all over the place with various teachers at some schools, uh, some master teachers, um, teaching specialists, um, and based on what um, you had shared previously, is that it was determined that the master, master teacher program you determined was more effective to student achievement than our current interventionist who pulls students out.
Okay, so, I mean, go ahead.
Well, that's what, that's what you said, right?
Well, I said that it was, whenever you're looking at the difference between the two, both are very much needed. That's why we kept some of both. So, um, we did not cut all interventionists, we did not cut all master teachers. Whenever we have, um, looking at our test data, whenever we have sixty, seventy, eighty percent of our students that are falling below, um, average, you know, those individual teachers and academic, um, interventionists um, work with twenty, thirty kids, um, through that time, where a master teacher can have a, um, an effect on changing the teaching in the classroom. So what we've determined is that there's some basis of, you know, tier one instruction, what happens in the classroom needs to change to help those students not be low, as low as they are, and not need the intervention. And then there's some that need the intervention, so that's why we went with a mix of the two, um, to have some interventionists and some master teachers. So that we're supporting our classroom teachers, but we're also supporting our lowest level students too.
Okay, so I know based on this list and then, um, I don't know if we had a conversation about this, but it was mentioned that the principals were in charge of making the reductions at their school, like, that you had.
They were consulting, they met with Amanda to determine what would go in their federal program.
Okay, so, in doing that, how, how did you decide that? Because it sounds like that each school is a little bit different now. So you may have one school that has one master teacher and no teaching specialist. And then you might have another school that has four teaching specialists and an interventionist. How did, how did, how do we make the determination to be so different across the district? Instead of making, instead of all the schools being more similar?
I can say, most schools chose to keep at least a master teacher. Um, Lawrence Elementary chose to teach the, I mean, keep their five, um, teaching specialists because, um, their structures with their clusters, they had very strong leaders that were, um, working that way in those classrooms. So they kept, um, five stipends versus one teaching position, um, which is a little bit cheaper than a teaching position. Um, so whenever they're looking at, you had to look at the strengths of, um, the classroom teachers that were the master teachers and versus the teaching specialists. The high school, um, had four master teachers, went down to two to support a hundred teachers, and then kept one, um, teaching specialist. Um, that would still kind of come in and out. So there was a, kind of a structure of whenever they had that conversation of who they had, what they had, um, this is the money you have, we'd already had the number of cuts that they needed to make based on, um, kind of what we were shooting for. And, um, so they were having that conversations in, um, their federal planning meetings of which ones they wanted in their federal, um, budget versus, um, so.
But regardless of how the structure ended up, the plan is to still for all the schools to use the learns program.
That is correct. So we'll still continue with clusters and, um, supporting our teachers through clusters. We'll still have, um, their ILTs, our district I L T instructional leadership teams, um, to still move our district forward with those, um, structures in place.
Okay. Did we have, I haven't flipped back yet to the staples. Have we, do we have those highlighted as to what's actually being paid and drilled that down this year?
Uh, what is on the schedule is a real, has the same funds that were approved last year. We allowed for reallocations, the only changes that I had were in the athletic department for the high school. Uh, Mr. Spires, uh, provided some, a different allocation there, uh, including lowering his own supplement to make it work for his staff and stay within the same number of dollars that were approved prior year. And then, within the teaching and learning department, the district level supplements for academics, um, some of those were, the, the amounts stayed the same, uh, some of the roles changed because we shifted our priorities and did away with certain programs. Um, but overall, there are, there's a zero dollar increase associated with supplemental payments. Just rearranging the chairs.
And so, and to give you of all those that are filled right now versus those that are not, I do not have that. But, you know, sometimes it's based on, do they have a person to coach it or do they have a person to lead it, you know? So, kind of based on those needs, um, that come and go, and it may be this year it's filled, next year it's not. And, um, so, but I don't have that list of everything that's not filled currently.
Okay.
But included, included in the, the salaries would be a, like we said, a fifteen hundred dollar per sale increase in the teacher salary schedule. That's the change in the state minimum, uh, that carries the teacher, a teacher with a bachelor's degree in their first year of teaching up to forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Non-teacher employees that are on salary schedules will get a step increase, the size of the steps themselves have, are, remain unchanged. So there's no changes to the salary schedules over the twenty-four, twenty-five levels. Um, except for bus drivers, where the state portion of their salary of a particular cell was increased by two percent. All other general funds, uh, schedules besides that one remains unchanged. Student nutrition, while federal pro, while funded by a federal program, uh, was increased by five percent in trying to catch up and make them more competitive with other districts in our area. Uh, again, that is covered under a federal program and not under the general fund. Uh, any employee who is not on a salary schedule will not be receiving a pay increase from the twenty-four, twenty-five levels. Uh, we believe that we have enough padding to allow for some small increase. What we would shoot for would hopefully be at least one and a half percent, which is roughly the value of a step, if the steps, you know, of a step increase. Um, and then what we would be looking to do is to resubmit to the board uh, permission to do that if funds are available after the day forty-five allocation. We receive adjustments to our state allocations, uh, if you'll remember. Uh, we'll start this, we'll start the fiscal year receiving state funding based on our current year, day one thirty-five. That is adjusted again at day forty-five, so if we pick up students, we will increase funding. If we lose students, obviously we could go down again. Uh, so for the people, uh, that are not on a salary schedule, we will continue the same rate of pay until at least that date, uh, at which time, if revenues are, are holding strong, if we still feel like we have the flexibility in the budget, then at that point, we may submit for a pay request for those who receive no increase through the budget.
Um, another document that you sent to us was a reference to our actual fund balance. Um, and this document, you know, we know that we had approved a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar dip into the fund balance. We know we approved an eight hundred thousand dollar dip into it in February for the master teacher program. But this document shows that you are now looking for three hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, um, an anticipated additional use of the general fund. Is that the mileage increase that you're asking for?
Can you tell me what you're looking at?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, you know, the two documents you gave me, um, dated six, five.
It's page three of this document.
So I don't know if he has that one.
I did.
Um, you sent the two documents, um, the expenditures as of June fifth and revenue as of June fifth. And we came up with a one point eight, um, anticipated.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, um, what the reference of, the six fifty, the eight hundred were already approved. Um, the additional from the one four five to the one eight is the three ninety-three that we were talking about. So that's the anticipated over expenditures for current year.
Right.
For twenty-four, twenty-five?
For twenty-four, twenty-five. So this is actual revenue versus expenditures as of to date.
Okay, so.
Keep in mind that what we were, our state revenues are down over one million dollars from what we were projected to receive for the current fiscal year. So.
For twenty-four, twenty-five, we're a million dollars less than what the state was supposed to offer?
Well, and what we were projected, when we prepared our budgets for twenty-four, twenty-five, I, I keep, I keep saying it, the new funding model is not very friendly to districts like ours, where we are not experiencing growth. Uh, because all it does is reallocate, the, 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 the size of the pie does not change. If, if all of a sudden the entire state had an influx of students, the still, the size of that pie doesn't change. It's just a matter of how it's allocated between the districts. So if you take a district like ours, then it's stagnant or shrinking, and a district that is growing at our original projections based on prior year one thirty-five, and again at day forty-five, and again at the following day one thirty-five, we see wild fluctuations in our funding. It makes it incredibly difficult to plan and operate a school district. So yes, between what we were originally projected to receive, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five, and what our final allocations are, there was a one point one million dollar decline. Uh, and, and we had actually budgeted less than what they told us. Um, and again, they're, I mean, it, it's mathematical, it's not like they were lying to us, but, you know, with.
But, but I, I, and I hear you, but I, I guess my question there, because it, when they made these increases, and, correct me if I'm wrong, the way I understood it was when they said, school districts, you need, here's the new cost for, um, somebody that's coming new to your district, this is what, that, what you have to pay that person. And then there's a step increase, and I remember it was kind of, it was gra, you know, it was, it was high for, for short-term teachers and it got lower, it's, and.
Sure.
But they provided no funding for that, right? The state didn't.
Well, so, well, it's, it's not quite as simple as that.
I'm just trying to say that they demanded more.
Yeah.
And then they gave us less, so is, is this a double whammy?
Again, it, it doesn't, it's not, it's not nuanced to an individual district's circumstances. So when they say they allocated funding to cover the salary increase, they, they do all of their modeling based on the average teacher pay, right? And they create this average that they say is like a masters and, and twelve, okay? So they say, well, the average teacher, masters and twelve, uh, is going to cost this much money. And so we're going to fund districts based on this arbitrary student-teacher ratio and, and this average. Uh, but the changes that they made to the salary schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five, there wasn't a large percentage to the average. The average teacher received an average increase, who received a massive increase were the teachers at the bottom of the scale. If you look at the average experience level of our district and districts like ours, we employ a lot of beginning and first, you know, few years teachers. So, you know, whereas they, our level of funding was increased based on some modest salary increase, our actual outlay increased by a dramatic, I mean, those were like eight and ten percent raises at the bottom of the scale. So, that was what the majority of our, a significant number, at least of our teachers, were receiving. But the increase in our funding was based on a much smaller number. Now, you know, i- i- if, if we did a, a better job of retaining teachers and employed more of, I mean, if we had more experienced teachers, they would cost us more money. Uh, but, you know, the, the problem we have is that, you know, you, you build your budgets based on who you have in place and what you, what your resources are, and so we were staffed based on who we had. And the changes to the funding model and the, and the salary schedule last year for twenty-four, twenty-five was a double whammy to us. Uh, and then, then our student numbers, our one thirty-five day number was significantly, it was like a hundred and eighty, our weighted pupil units dropped by like a hundred and eighty-eight students.
Yeah.
Well, they didn't leave in one classroom, they didn't, they don't depart in a way that says, okay, well, you can just downsize your workforce. You know, we've got contracted teachers in place and they, you know, it's a few here and a few there and a few here. And so, yeah, your classes get a little bit smaller, but our funding dropped by one point one million dollars, we can't shift on the fly like that.
Do you have that, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I, 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 I do want to tie into, because I've gone back and looked at like last month's school board meeting where you were reporting our cash flow and what we've done since April of thirtieth. And I'm looking here, the, the difference in what we've, our revenues and our expenditure, we're still four point five million dollars. So my question then is, where does that million dollars that this, that we have, that we were kind of hoping the state would get versus these numbers that you stated in our last board meeting?
Some, so, just because we're short in one revenue doesn't mean we're short in every revenue. We've actually had a pretty good year in our local revenues.
Okay.
Which serves, serves to partially offset the cuts in our, in our state.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because I was confused, like, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and tha- that's fair.
And then, and then, again, the, right now, if you look at where we are and you're, you're thinking, well, how is it that we're projecting, you know, a pretty sorry year based on that? Well, number one, we're cutting as, we're tightening as, as tight as we can to try to minimize that every day. Uh, the other thing is, our, our, our local funding gets less and less during this time of the year. It's low, you know, our, our fund balance will be lowest in like October, right? Uh, we get most of our money, and so, you know, if you look at our year-to-date revenues, um, they, they're real big and then they start to.
Right, and I do realize there's some fluctuations there, but.
And then, but when, we have during the month of June and July, we have very little local dollars coming in. And we, that, we still have to continue paying our people.
Right, yeah, and I do.
Pay them in July, that'll get pulled in, and so, uh, what looks like you're operating at a surplus that will, can shift dramatically over the course of the summer.
Yeah, fair.
So, in this same, sorry, in this same. So, in this same, sorry, in this same document that Kathy's talking about, with the three ninety-three that will need to be requested, below it, you have that, there's a LARNs claim closeout. What is that? Is that the one that did not get approved?
So, where, where we are was, we just got a closeout letter from LARNs, basically saying anything that you were under contract to keep, you could then submit for, um, reimbursement. So we have submitted and put forth the claim that our teachers, our master teachers were under contract with us, and we could not just fire them for an employment contract, and that we were required to keep them. So we have submitted that claim, hoping to get that money back, um, as part of closeout. So that is the amount, the nine twenty-three, seven oh four sixty-two is how much our final claim was to close out the program for any expenditures that we felt like could go based on the rules that they gave us for closeout. So it may be that the eight hundred thousand that y'all approved for LARNs to continue on, um, would not have been needed because they have allowed us to close out, um, claiming those funds.
And when we have an answer on that?
Um, the last claim that we had, um, came back within like two weeks. Um, we submitted that last week, but we have not heard anything. I think we submitted it Tuesday or Wednesday of last week.
I think it was.
Yeah, I think, I think it was.
It was Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday, but.
Tuesday of last week, so, um, whether we'll hear back as fast since it's a closeout claim versus a, um, just a claim that we had the last time, I, I don't know, so. But we're, um, hopeful, you know, that they gave us a closeout option, um, to be able to pull down additional mon, funding, so that's, I wanted to make sure that that was there too for you.
Like, like Dr. Finland said, our argument is that, you know, we had, we had obviously signed contracts with every one of those teachers for a hundred and ninety days that were, would require us to pay them through the end of the year. So hopefully, they will acknowledge that and, and allow us to claim those dollars.
Going back to your statement of building a budget based off of what we have, yet we are building a budget now on a four point nine millage increase that we don't have yet, because we don't know if we're gonna pass it or not pass it. Did it not make more sense to build a budget on what we actually have now versus building one with a four point nine millage increase?
It was my understanding and the kind of the direction I gave him was that if Clennan was gonna go for the millage, we were gonna go for the millage to present the budget as a millage increase, because we didn't wanna come and say, well, if you give us the millage increase, then we're just gonna be able to do X, Y, Z, or how are we gonna use the millage if we can make that budget work? You know, and it's very hard to make the budget work without the millage increase. You know, if you, if y'all choose not to pass, or Clennan chooses not to pass, you know, that's something we'll go back to. Um, we've already had some discussions of where, um, you know, we might have to, um, take a little bit more out of this, that pot, that pot, you know, just make it tighter. Um, so that's kind of where we were with that one, so.
We, we, we did have a discussion on having a Plan B.
Yes, and you, you said that we would have to come back for.
We do have that, so.
The end of this week to possibly have another meeting, so.
Well, in our, the, the projected revenues that you have shared for twenty-five, twenty-six shows that it is an increase in revenue from last year of two point five seven million dollars. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah.
So if ninety percent of our budget comes from salaries, we're getting two and a half million dollar increase, based on the general conversation we just had, that we're not saving four million off those reductions, we might be saving two with a little bit of, um, a little bit on top of that from having to pay the fifteen hundred dollars. It just seems like maybe we could get closer to where we need to be versus, um, versus proposing the, the millage increase. But, cause that sa, that increase seems to wash out what you were saying, um, that our expected increases are. So it seems like there may be some, I appreciate that we're trying to cushion, but I don't know that we're in a position to cushion. I don't know that we're in a position to not be as tight and as efficient as possible.
Well.
But that's just.
And the reason, the reason that I would argue for a cushion is that we are, right now, very closely mo, other than rounding, we are modeling based on our projection from the state revenues. Since the implementation of the new federal, not federal, the new state education funding model, we have never had a time when they ended up giving us what they projected to give us.
So it's always been less?
Oh, well, one point one million dollars, you know, so, and this is only the second year, so the first year, you know, yeah, we still got cut, but we had received so many new dollars when they first implemented the, the funding model, that, you know, everybody else was, all the big districts were complaining about the new funding model, and I was like, what are they complaining about? This is a fantastic new funding model. Well, it has proceeded at every day forty-five and every day one thirty-five to show me exactly why it was not a very friendly model. So right now, we're projecting, uh, very close to what they, what they told us, this is your projection, but that is holding firm, uh, with us not dropping students, us not dropping students relative to the, to our position within the state as a whole. At some point, the growth in our area, you would think, would have to turn the course, and we will start putting more students in our classrooms. Will that happen for twenty-five, twenty-six? Possibly.
I mean, we have been on a steady decline of student, student enrollment for years.
For a decade, yeah.
And, you know, and even based on the demographic information that we have, you know, received in the past several months, it still doesn't look as though it's gonna give us any large growth numbers.
Right, and I think, and I think the continued decline over years, you know, we should've been gradually making some smaller cuts throughout the years of, you know, whenever we lose a hundred kids, is it easy just to say, four teachers are gone? You know, those four, those hundred kids might be ten at each grade, so it's hard to say that you can lose a teacher, but, you know, whenever you lose two hundred kids over a couple of years, three hundred kids, then you can lose a couple of positions, because, you know, those may not be at the same school, you know, so, um, that's why the cuts this year, you know, strategic, you know, we've talked about, you know, not really liking the structure of some of our middle schools because of the way we're having to, um, either split grades, split content areas, that kinda stuff, but that's due to having to not have thirteen in a middle school classroom. You know, so those types of cuts had to happen to be able to bring those numbers back up into a more fiscally responsible, um, way. Um, so that, that's kind of the decisions and where we've been looking at cuts and where we've been looking at, you know, the numbers and trying to balance them, that one middle school's not sitting with thirty in a room and another middle school's sitting with thirteen, um, because the cuts and the allocation just needs to be a little bit more balanced, and that's what we've tried to do this year.
Um, in the information that you sent regarding our fund balance, um, I pulled those numbers out, and it looks like our current fund balance is around six and a half million dollars. Is that correct?
That was our fund balance on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So at the end of last year, yes.
Right, right. So at that time, you know, and, and just to refresh everyone's memory, um, the, the audit report, we didn't have a, a budget to actual for twenty-three, twenty-four, um, and when we were here in June of last year, talking about the budget. And if, and I realize that's because it's not gonna close out till the end of June, okay? So I get that. But then the audit report, we didn't actually get that until February, because there was a delay, okay, whatnot. And as I was going back and comparing our line items and what our budget, our budgeted amounts have been across the years for underlying items, um, it doesn't, I don't recall ever having been presented this information at the board meeting, um, and it is that we overspent our budget for twenty-four, twenty-five by three point eight million dollars. And I understand that just over a million came from additional revenue that we received, but then we still overspent on our expenditures by two point seven. So, which means from twenty-three, the end of twenty-three, our fund balance was nine point two million dollars. And then at the end of twenty-four, there was a pull down two point seven million, so our fund balance is now six point five million. I guess I'm really confused, because as I looked at that, and maybe I've missed something, but I did go back and look through all of our board minutes and all the documents that you had presented, um, and I don't recall you ever bringing to the board that we need, needed to dip into the fund balance for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. We approved a budget, and it appears as though it was overspent without ever requesting information from the board.
That's fair. So what I will say was that a million dollars roughly of expenditures that were unexpected and hit us in twenty-three, twenty-four were actually attributable to the twenty-two, twenty-three year. Uh, that was a, a billing issue. It was related to SROs, and we didn't receive the bill, so we received half of a year of billing, uh, in, in the other fiscal year. So the, the one point nine million surplus should've been more like nine hundred thousand surplus, and that would've made the two point seven million deficit closer to one point seven, which was still.
I wanna make sure I understand then, so SRO didn't bill correctly?
It was the, I was contacted by the county and informed that we had not paid our bill, to which I responded that we had never received such a bill, and there, they sent us a bill, so we paid it. Uh, that was.
But don't we reconcile that? Don't we know we should be paying the county?
Well, there was, there was some confusion, because there was some additional, you, I know you've seen where the state has talked about how many SROs they're funding. So when the county, some of our county SROs, we ended up being able to pick up through that, and then when they don't, when the money goes direct, that goes from, directly from the state to the county or city or whoever's providing the services without actually flowing through the city, or without flowing through the school district. So the reason that we didn't, it was a lack of communication within our administrative office, but I was under the assumption that we were able to get some positions picked up through state funding. That was not the case, we just hadn't been billed for it. So we had received some billing from the county, it just wasn't complete. Uh, so when they hit us with a million dollars of expenditures related to the prior year, we really didn't have any choice but to pay it. So we adjusted our budget, uh, for the current year and the year after to, to reflect what those are actually costing us.
So at what point is there, why, why wasn't that brought to the board?
It should've been. It, uh, you know, if that would've been last, uh, February, I believe, was when we received the bill for the prior fiscal year, so it was even after the completion of the audit. Probably should've, it, it made note of it. I don't think that every, I don't think that every unanticipated item would require a budget amendment necessarily, but, uh, in terms of a.
You're talking about a million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
You don't think the board needs to know about that?
Sure, and, and you should've been informed.
So if a million went to SROs, there's still one point seven million that's not accounted, where did that, where was that spent?
A lot of it was in the special education, uh, contracted services, uh, and you can kinda see a, a trend there where we dramatically increased our budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. That was in response to, uh, what was hitting us in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then you'll see another large increase for twenty-five, twenty-six, because those services are, they have to be provided. We don't really have a choice as to whether we enlist somebody to do it or not, but when we've made the transit, transition over the years from in-house employee-provided services to contractor-provided, provided services, comes with increased costs. If we are unable to find somebody to even do those services in person, it becomes even more expensive, because it's not any cheaper to get virtual, and it still requires you to have a person on site in the form of a parapro, so you're really only saving a part of the salary. Those were the, the two big misses in the twenty-three, twenty-four year.
And then there was still, we received an additional a million dollar revenue as well, so where, where did that go?
What do you mean, where did it go?
So the total amount that we overspent was around three point seven, three point eight million, because some was, we over, we overspent what we said we were gonna spend on our expenditures, but then we received additional revenues that weren't assigned to any budget line, so where did those monies go?
The schedule that is, that Dr. Finland gave me a copy of, that I believe he had received from you, uh, breaks it down on the function level, where the misses were. You can see that, uh, one point three million was related to instruction, two point three million was related to support services, support services would pick up the, um, the SRO portion. Um, I can give you a breakdown of prior year, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget to actual final numbers by object, which is the, how we present and, and pass the budget. I don't have it with me, I can provide you one by one.
So when you made the decision, were you the only one to make the decision to send the million dollar payout to the county? Did anyone else?
I mean, we knew that we received the bill late.
Okay.
Um, and I don't, I remember if that was, I know it was after the audit deadline, which would've been the end of November.
Right, so we couldn't accrue it back to the year where we.
Incurr.
But why was this not brought to the board?
I don't really have an answer for that. We, we.
And I do wanna point out too, that was concerning, and this is why I was going back through the board minutes, and that is, um, in January, um, in the minutes, you stated, um, that Mr. Phillips, the auditor, could not be here, um, they would reschedule, but that the district audit was complete, and the State Department of Education found our district to be unqualified, which is the highest opinion issued. Then in February, when the auditor was here, states Mr. Law, Mr. Lawless and the auditor, Mr. Phillips presented the twenty-three, twenty-four financial audit, Mr. Phillips stated the district received an opinion, an unmodified opinion, which means the district is doing well financially. And I do recall Mr. Jenkins specifically asking a question about that and saying, okay, so we're good, we're whole, we're good, and at no point in time, you felt the need to point this out, because at that night, we didn't have the audit books at our seats. You had them at your table.
Well, when, when Mr. Phillips presented to the board, he did go over the change in fund balance for the general fund, and he presents the change in total fund balance, which is all funds. He did do that, now there's a, an unmodified opinion doesn't mean that you had a good year, it means that your financial statements accurately reflect the year you had. So I, when you ask an auditor, are we good? He says, yes, you're, you're good. You know, our. You know, our, our fund balance isn't a situation where he would consider us to be, uh, where we would have going concern issues that we can't support ourselves and operate for another year, that's, that's one measure, uh, so we would not have received an adverse opinion for that. But when he says, when an auditor says you're good, that means that your financial statements, and this is one of them that shows this two point seven million dollar deficit, that, that the, the financial information that we gave him, that he, he audited and that we have the report on, is, is accurate and accurately reflects your financial position and the results of your operations, so, um, maybe there was a, a misunderstanding in terms of, when you ask, are we good, and he says we're good, that's different things, potentially.
Well, maybe so. At the end of the day, it is very concerning that we overspent by two point seven million, and not one time was any of that information brought to the board as it should've been. Um, and, and really, we overspent more than that because you spent the additional million dollars in revenue that came in. So it concerns me that our fund balance is now six point five, we had such a dramatic change in twenty-three, twenty-four, that again, no one came to the board about, and then we've already approved a six fifty, and we've already proved the eight, approved the eight hundred thousand to come out, and now we're kind of in a position where you either need four hundred more thousand, or we need to have a millage increase. Is that the gist of it?
Yes, ma'am. I think that, uh, and Dr. Finland and I have already had the, the conversations on, uh, providing additional information to the board periodically, uh, beyond, uh, what we present on a month-to-month basis, uh, whether that be quarterly or semi-annually, um, that's kind of why we were saying that we wanted to revisit some issues at day forty-five, you know, that was probably the biggest failure, was that we should have revisited the budget when we received the, the change in allocation. You know, the, the hope is always that you'll make it up somewhere else, uh, that, that doesn't necessarily materialize. So, uh, what we were proposing would be to provide more detailed information when we receive our allocation changes so that the board would be able to make changes on the fly. The kind of volatility that we're experiencing the last couple of years is not, it, it, it's really unprecedented in, in my experience, uh, so it, I think that we have to evolve with that, and, and what you're pointing out is a failure to evolve to the changing conditions.
Well, the, just, it's, it's deeply concerning and fiscally irresponsible for these type of changes in our budget to not be brought to the board.
True.
And honestly, it just makes me want to ask more questions. So now, you know, at this point, you know, I hope the whole board would agree, if, if not so be it, is that I think we need to see budget to actuals on a monthly basis. Because really, the information that you provide on a monthly basis, just with the cash flow, it doesn't, um, it doesn't provide us with enough detail, I think, to, to ask relevant questions about what's going on, so.
The, the budget to actual information that we provided, um, and the, the schedules that you had kind of made some notes on, that is something that can be fairly readily produced and given on a monthly basis, that wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I, I, and I just want to echo, I, I don't think there was anything malicious going on here, I just think that when you, when you encounter these big, you know, a million, you gotta, you gotta turn around and write a check to the county for a million dollars? That's gotta come to us, I mean, I, and, and it's really for your protection as well as all of us. We don't want you to be out there, you know, and, and the community think that someone's writing a check for the sake of writing a check, and.
Halfway over that.
Yeah, and I don't think, and, and again, I think the budget, the audit showed that, and that's why I was saying, is it good? Maybe I should've said, are we healthy? And, and, and that would've probably have sparked a, a different line of.
That would've, that would've been a different conversation.
Yes, and, because right now, it doesn't feel healthy.
You know, and, and the conversations that I, that I've had with the auditor himself, I mean, you know, we talk about the sustainability of a course.
Yeah.
Right, you know, and obviously, it, an organization like this cannot turn on a dime, you know, you, you extend your, you extend contracts, and they're a hundred ninety days, and you do it before you, you know, before the start of your year, uh, so you're, you're obligated, you know, on your, on your people cost, which is your ninety-plus percent of your budget, you're obligated before you ever start, you know, before you really start receiving, um, any kind of revenues or even any kind of outlays, those are, you have contracts and you're obligated on that. And, you know, things happen that, that you don't foresee. We control the things we can control, I think that the changes that we're making for twenty-five, twenty-six kind of reflect an acknowledgement that we are operating in an environment that is different than what we're accustomed to. The kind of, uh, the kind of changes that, that Dr. Finland is, is, is making are, are meaningful changes, they're not, it's not twenty-five thousand to, to travel, we're talking about, uh, we're talking about position cuts, you're talking about taking a workload and, and, and spreading it, you know, it's, it's a heavier burden on everybody that's left. But that's real, that's where we are, you know, we don't really have, and, it's not like we can go out and generate additional revenue, we don't have the ability to sell more widgets, uh, you know, we are allocated funds from public sources, and we have to spend them wisely, uh, and if the, the funding doesn't materialize, that hits us in a way that hurts. If, if an increased expenditures, whether it be through, you know, losing a person, having to replace them with a contractor that comes at greatly increased costs, or, you know, the, the, the SRO billing is, is, that was just a failure, uh, we should, we should've seen that. But, you know, think, things happen that, that you fail to reali- realize or, or, or are beyond your control, uh, you know, but I think that the changes that we're trying to propose for twenty-five, twenty-six acknowledges that and, and kind of charts a different course going forward.
So what's the percentage of the general fund that we have to have, ba- is based on our expenditures?
Roughly one month of your, one twelfth of your annual budget, or eight point three percent, uh, it doesn't necessarily.
So it would be right at close to five million?
Yeah, so, for us, if I have been told, you know, there's not an automatic, uh, there's not, not an automatic fiscal watch scenario that comes from dropping below that number, it is a major factor in putting a district on fiscal watch. I was kind of told by someone who was in position, who was in that position at the Department of Ed at the time, but is, has left, since left the Department of Ed, that, you know, given the, given the things that have happened in our district that are beyond our control, that the department would likely give us some grace in terms of our status, uh, as long as we could demonstrate that we were making changes that would put us in a position to build it back. You know, at, at that time, it was, uh, the conversation that I was having was related to the loss of the Lerns grant and the, the impact that was going to have, like, I said, man, you know, this is, this is something we didn't perceive, uh, you know, we're already in a, with a budgeted deficit, now we're going to have to amend the budget, we're adding another eight hundred thousand, and he said, well, it doesn't necessarily put you at fiscal watch if you drop below that one twelfth, but you would need to demonstrate, the district would have to demonstrate that we've made the necessary changes to not stay there.
With your projections to the end of this, our fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five, could we drop below five million?
Yeah, as soon as we.
It is possible.
Yeah, we're already at one point four million, and we're at six five now, so yeah.
Yeah, it'd be right at five, sure, I mean, maybe just right there, add it a little bit lower.
For twenty-five, twenty-six, um, the budget that we approve, if it co- comes closer to the end of the year and you need to dip into this general fund count, then does that not come before the board before you do that, just like the Lerns with the eight hundred thousand and the, is that not, are you not required to bring that to the board before you dip into it, or how?
No, ma'am, there would be no legal requirement, I think, of what you're seeing with the fact that we brought the Lerns change is kind of an increase in involvement of the board, beyond what is a requirement. You know, we could've operated at a deficit, obviously that would've been a bad idea, you know, because that's kind of what happened with our twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, but, you know, where we are with our fund balance and, and it, and our lean condition, I think that, you know, it doesn't benefit the administration, the board, or anybody in our district to not have everybody on the same page and aware of the issues that we're facing.
Just coming to board meetings, I never remember anything coming back to the board for a change in budget, like those three years that were there, um, starting in eighteen that went negative, I don't remember that, I don't, Mr. Carpenter, I know you've been here longer than, but I don't remember that coming back, I know that whenever some stipends or some bonuses were given, it was more of just a notification that was happening, that it might be a hit to a general fund, but it wasn't an approval, so, um, in my years' experience, I don't remember the budget coming back, but, I mean, that's definitely with a month expenditure revenue, you know, that would be something we could definitely see going forward, that if there felt like there needed to be some changes, we would be, um, providing more information to ask questions about and kind of see that ahead of time.
Yeah, and, uh, Dr. Finland and I were discussing earlier today, I don't recall, obviously during my time of employment here, or even in my previous role that I had with the district, I don't ever remember being presented with and voting on an amendment to the budget. Occasionally, there are line items, whether it's to enter into, uh, authorizing expenditure for a study, right, so you're off, essentially, you're saying this is, you're recognizing that this is an unbudgeted expenditure, right, so when we, you know, we, we've done that in the past, we've been enlisted contractors to do a certain study for the district. Uh, when the board votes on that, you're essentially saying that this is not something that was planned, and we're authorizing you to spend it anyway. But I don't ever recall a scenario where we presented an actual budget amendment until this year, so that, um, in my experience, that's the first one I've seen.
All right, um, you know, I, I'll just say this, I just, I, when a budget is approved, that's the budget that we stick to, if you go outside of that budget and needs to come back to the board, I, I, I don't, I think that's, I thought that was clear, I don't know, maybe that was just my opinion or something, but, um, and fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars is one thing, but two point seven million?
Yes, ma'am. That was a, that was a brutal year.
Um, all right, does any, I want to respect everyone's time, we're way over, and I know some want to have a break, so, uh, does anyone have anything else? Okay, with no further business on our agenda, I will end our work session, thank you.
Thank you.